Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here with us today. Before I start, I would like to let our Spanish interpreters to make an announcement. Ms. Jasmine, do you want to say the announcement in Spanish of how people can access the Spanish interpretation? She can hear us?
They were all, they're automatically in the interpretation room.
Okay, so then anybody who can access it, it could be, they can hear it, right? And just put it, I thought there was some information where they can do it, the interpretation where the globe is. Okay, so I can say that in Spanish, just in case if somebody's locked on. Para cualquier persona que quiere escuchar la interpretación en español, puede clickear el globo y elegir la sección en español y usted automáticamente va a poder escuchar a la señora Jasmine y el señor Brian que hablan en español. Okay, with that being said, before we start, I would like to acknowledge the unfortunate incident with the students and teachers in Texas, and we'd like for us to take a moment of silence. Thank you, guys. My name is Sandra D. Shepard. I am the Director of Community Service and Programs for the City of Hyattsville. I also want to acknowledge that we have ASL interpretations simultaneously happen as we speak. If you need those services, please go into your, where your picture is, or the interpreters that you can see them, and pin them by clicking on the three little dots in the picture, and just pin them, so you'll be able to see them during the interpretation. Also, if you have any questions or that you would like to know from our panelists, I would ask for you to hold those questions, add them into the chat, or hold them into the end of our sessions when we do our Q and A. I also would ask respectfully if you can mute yourself while, so we don't get no feedback and we can hear our panelists that are here today. With that being said, I would like to also welcome my co-facilitator, David Smith, Senior, with the Board Liaison with Prince George's County Board of Education, as my co-facilitator. Thank you for being with us today, David, and helping out with facilitating this event. I would also like to welcome Board of Education member Pamela Bruza Strather for District Three. Our Hyattsville team, middle school team. We have Ms. Stamper, our principal at Hyattsville. Ms. Machuca, Community School Coordinator. Dr. McCurdy Wright, Special Education Educator, Community Liaison and Title One Coordinator. And also, we have Ms. Lucero, School and Community Engagement Advocate with the Department of Social Service. We also have Ms. Adrian Augusta, Media Relation Mental Health Program Manager with the City of Hyattsville, Port List Department. David, you can take the rest.
Thank you, Sandra. I want to introduce Ms. Julia Bowlering. She's the Team Lead for On Track with Prince George's Shepherd Pratt. Also, want to introduce Mr. Greg Franklin. He's the Director with the Prince George's County Crisis Response Affiliate Santee Group. And also introduce Ms. America Luciano. I believe that, sorry if I got it wrong, but she's a mental health clinician with Hyattsville team. And I think that's, I think that's it, Sandra, is it? Okay, thank you. Back to you.
Thank you. If we missed out your last name when you come in and speak about your initiatives, or when you come back and answer a question, please make sure you clarify, to make sure we're spelling your last name or saying your last name correctly. So the way that we're going to have the forum, we're first going to start with Ms. Pamela Bruza Strather's Hyattsville team, our representative from the Police Department in the City of Hyattsville, to kind of talk about the initiatives that they are working on and related to mental health. So we are going to start with Ms. Bruza Strather to talk a little bit about the initiatives that she is doing with the school system.
All right, thank you so much. It's so great to be here this evening again. I'm Pamela Bruza Strather, of the Board of Education member for District Three, and the proud representative of Hyattsville Middle School. And I'm just so proud of our Hyattsville team and the support they've provided our students this year. It's been difficult for many reasons, the pandemic, and also managing through swing space and other issues that our team has just done such a great job. So I'm just so excited to hear more from them this evening. But I thought I would just start and give a minute of sort of the broader perspective and PG CPS on the, for mental health services, as this has been a Board of Education priority since I joined the Board in 2018. And I was going to go ahead and share a slide, if that's all right, if I can have share screen. I'm going to just show the trajectory of where we're headed. So in 2018, when I joined the Board, there were just a handful of mental, actual clinicians in our schools. And, you know, at the time, one of those is La Clinica de Pueblo at Northwestern High School, with the New Refugio program, which is very successful as well. And the desire of the Board of Education at the time was to see more mental health services and less services that you might think of under security and discipline, and to move with Dr. Goldson and her leadership around trauma-informed school system and the educational equity policy that was written in 2017, 2018, and passed in 2019, really focused on adverse childhood experiences as the lens by which each student would be seen as unique in the services they need. And at the same time, the state legislature in the current commission were working on the blueprint for Maryland's future and identify the community schools model and mental health services as a top priority. And PG CPS schools are immediate beneficiaries from what we call the down payment. Three years ago, when 45 of our community schools received grant funding, but then in the next year expanded to adding a community schools coordinator, then a mental health practitioner. And now this school year, we've had 77 schools that are Kerwin-funded, mental health practitioners, and that will grow to 95 next year. And you can see here in the chart how Dr. Goldson has outlined a budget for the, for next school year. That gets us to almost...
I'm sorry, Ms. Bruza Strather, you are muted.
Oh, sorry about that. I was trying to move the bar here. It's hard when you have a slider. So you'll see in the chart that Dr. Goldson is moving us to have all schools with full-time therapy supports within, by the, by two more school years. So, but really, almost, you know, almost all will have them by next year. And then general operating funds will support in that FY 2025. And so that means Board of Education will, you know, be working with Dr. Goldson on, you know, the specific general funds of the budget by that year. But I just love, I love the planning ahead in that we can all be working towards this together. And in all of our schools, we'll have this resource in just a few years. And like I said, between, you know, 2018 to 2025, that's a big, really big change to go from three to all 207 schools. So I want to thank Dr. Goldson for her leadership on that. And, you know, I just wanted, you know, to conclude there and just, you know, once again, reiterate that mental health is a priority of the PG CPS Board of Education. And I think you can see a strong commitment to that for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is so wonderful to see how is it growing from having not much to now being able to have, and I hope in the next year, 95. Then that's a perfect getaway to have our Hyattsville Middle School team to talk about what they do in the schools related to mental health.
Okay, I'll start by introducing the team. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Stamper. I am the Principal of Hyattsville Middle School. It is such a pleasure to be here this evening to share with you all how we've been effective at providing mental health services to our students, to our families. We do have a growing number of students who are dealing with mental health issues and have benefited from having a mental health clinician in the building, as well as other support and support staff. Our team is always hard at work looking for innovative ways to support our students and our families. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Machuca, one of our team members. Thank you, Ms. Machuca.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As Ms. Stamper mentioned, I am Tonya Machuca, and I am the Community School Coordinator at Hyattsville Middle School. And Hyattsville Middle School became a community school last school year. And when I first started, I was only there for about three months left of the school year. This year has been different because I started a full school year. So this is my first full school year in-house with Hyattsville Middle School. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we have been managing our mental health services throughout this year for our students and families. So through community schools, we do have a referral form that we have online, and we also have in paper form where students and families are able to be referred. Most importantly, when students get referred, some of the information that we need in order to process the referral form, their referral, excuse me, is their name, their ID number, their grade, their date of birth, and their reason for referral. Because then all this information is key, because it helps us delegate where we need to refer the student, what services are available for their age group or their grade. So it's very, very important information whenever we are receiving it through our form. Okay, so who is a part of our referral process? So we have several people on our team. As Ms. Stamper mentioned, we're always hard at work. And part of our team is, for sure, our administrators, our principal, our assistant principals, our counselors, our mental health clinician, Ms. Lucero, myself, and our, and our school community engagement advocate. And who is able to submit a referral, it's our whole entire school community. So anyone within our school staff, any parents, our advocate, our people personnel worker, even students are able to self-refer, and even anyone in the community. If you reach out to me and say, hey, you know, I was talking to a student that I think might need some type of support, more than gladly, we will send over the referral form. And we also have it posted on our school website as well, so that way anyone that wants to refer a student or family is able to have access to it. So some of the things that a student can get referred for that we see daily in school, some things are anger and aggression, grief and loss, bullying, behavioral concerns. All of these scenarios especially have to do, have to deal heavily with the impact that they have on our mental health. So it's super important that we process them within 24 hours. So most likely, when they are around these areas such as grief or loss and violence and bullying, our mental health clinician or our counselors will receive and be able to assist the student in need. But these are some of the examples for some of the things that our students have been referred for this year. And I'm going to pass it off now to our School and Community Engagement Advocate, and she's going to talk a little bit about how she also contributes to the referral process and how attendance and mental health are also linked. Ms. Lucero?
Good evening. My name is Mary Alsalu Saro. I am with the Department of Social Service, and I am, I'm the Community, School and Community Engagement Advocate at Hyattsville Middle School. Basically, what I do is these type of cases are the ones mainly at the school, but I also focus a lot on truancy cases, students that are absent at school. I'm there, you know, I provide services to the families and the students. Not all cases are just on truancy, so there are some families that need assistance with insurance or SNAP or any resources that the state offers. I'm there to support the school, and I also collaborate with Ms. Machuca. Whenever she needs assistance in anything in the school, I'm there to support them.
Hello, everyone. My name's America Lucero. I'm the Mental Health Commission at Hyattsville Middle School. I got hired to drive behavioral health, and I'm housed at the middle school. So some of the services that I provide are non-clinical, so I can do check-ins. These are, this can be periodically, it can be weekly, every other week, where I'm meeting with a student for about 10 to 15 minutes, just to make sure that they're okay. Or there's also consultations with teachers and any other staff at the school. I really work closely with the administrative team, Mrs. Stamper, Ms. Machuca, and Ms. Lucero and the counselors. And then in terms of clinical services, we can also do diagnostic evaluations for our students who may need that one-on-one, more intense therapy session. And I'm able to do individual or family therapy. That's a good thing. I'm with students at the school, so the parent can call into our session or log in virtually. And we also, of course, create treatment plans and keep up with their goals throughout their treatment plan. And then, of course, I can always do group workshops as well as needed. And some of the topics that I can discuss are self-esteem, decision-making, dealing with stress, communication skills, social skills, and...
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am Dr. McCurdy. I am a special educator at Hyattsville Middle School, as well as a Title One Coordinator. And as a Title One school, we receive additional funding to help support all of the things that our mental health clinician and our community school engagement advocate just discussed. So with Title One funds, in collaboration with community school funds, we're able to purchase services for families to help support the mental health challenges that they might be facing. One of the, well, some of the services are listed here, Thrive Behavioral Health. PG County Community Conferencing Circles happen during the school day. Restorative practices through the mindfulness center. And students that are referred get to participate in those services and activities. We also have different events for our, for our parents and families to attend, so that we could continue to provide those supports. Because as a community school, we are focused and aligned on integrating the services from the community to support our families. So Title One, even though it is a program to support the, to supplement what low-income families are unable to provide, together, we're able to provide even more for all of our families. So some of the events that we have monthly, we actually gather all of the information from our needs-based assessments and our community surveys, so that we know exactly where to target and how we should use our funds. So we did have a yoga event to help with coping with anxieties. And we, we actually had a discussion in a parent input meeting regarding our school budget. We have a community paint night that is actually happening this week. And we have community movement nights, because what we do know is that movement helps increase those endorphins and those good feelings. So we do those types of things, so that our families are, that's my family right there, so that our families are feeling good and happy, and we're able to not only support our students, but our families as well. Those are the things that happen in the school. And for whatever we cannot do in school, we actually do outsource to other, for other services. So we have Advanced Behavioral Health, the PG Adolescent Clubhouse, Prince George's County Community Conferencing Circles that happens in school and out of school, Department of Family Services for Children, Youth, and Families for Children in Need of Support Program, Open Path Collective, and Roberta's House.
Well, oh my goodness, that's a lot of, like, a lot of services that you guys are providing. And it's just so wonderful to, like, put the different pieces together, everyone's role. So thank you so much for sharing all of that information and how, how our parents can access it. So now I would like to invite Adrienne Augusta with the Police Department to talk a little bit about her initiatives in the city.
Thank you very much, Sandra, for having me here. I would like to just also address the unfortunate events that happened in Texas earlier today at the school and state that although that is several miles from our home here in Hyattsville, the Hyattsville Police Department is obviously paying attention to what's happening. And there will be extra patrols, including foot patrols, around our city's schools. Many of you parents are probably familiar with our Community Action Team members, Officer Lucas. You may know her better as Officer Matthews, and then, of course, Acting Corporal Evans and his four-legged companion, K-9 Nola. They will, of course, still continue to be visible along with other officers during their regular daily patrol shifts. So again, thank you for having me here. I do have a very long title, Media Relations and Mental Health Programs Manager. They are two unrelated jobs, and obviously, for these purposes, the more important hat that I wear tonight is as the Mental Health Programs Manager. These are roles that I stepped into in the fall of 2020. Our Hyattsville City Council and former police chief recognized the importance of having these types of programs available for the Police Department and for the community. And so I was given the leeway to begin to put together a comprehensive mental health and wellness program for the department. We, in the first six months, were able to have all of our officers receive mental health first aid training specific for first responders. And so, so mental health first aid is a training many of you may be familiar with. There is one that's specific for first responders, and we made sure that everyone had that as a required training. But in addition, we just over the past year have been able to have 11 officers receive the 40-hour crisis intervention team training. That has been a wonderful partnership with the affiliated Santee Group here in Prince George's County, and also with the Anarundel County Police Department Crisis Response Program. So those officers are going to be part of one of two major initiatives that we are beginning to roll out right now. And it's part of one of two major federal grants that we received last year. And I do, I want to back up and just add, one other training that we did do also in the first six months was a six-and-a-half-hour Zoom Mental Health and Wellness Day specifically for the Police Department. But because we were all still in COVID world, this was back in the early 2021, we had an additional five other law enforcement agencies join us. So we had about 70 participants in this Mental Health and Wellness Day, and it covered a variety of educational and training components from several different agencies in our area, talking about mental health and mental illness, domestic abuse, self-care, wellness, and de-escalation techniques when dealing with someone who is having a mental health crisis. So rolling from that into the crisis intervention team, we last year received one federal grant for about $218,000, excuse me, $230,000 over two years to provide clinicians who can meet officers at the scene of the most extreme mental health crisis calls. This grant is in partnership with the Town of Brentwood and the City of Rainier Police Departments. And so what we'll be doing, because of our limited sizing with the police departments, is instead of doing what many people may be more familiar with, is the embedded ride-along CIT type of program where clinicians ride with officers, we will have clinicians meet the officers at the scene. So we have the CIT-certified officers who do a phenomenal job of de-escalating mental health crisis calls on a daily basis. And a lot of people probably would not realize this, simply because this is not in the media, thankfully, on a regular basis. But I've had officers talk to me about situations, they've called me about different situations, and they really do a great job every day interacting with people who are having a very bad day and making sure that a peaceful, peaceful resolution is reached, whether it is taking someone to the hospital, or unfortunately, having to EPS someone and force them to go, making sure that that person ultimately is not a danger to themselves or others. But so we have that program that we are starting to develop. And then also, last year, we launched the HCPD Mental Wellness Check-In Initiative. And I'm incredibly proud of this. This is a groundbreaking initiative. We don't believe that anything, anywhere else is doing anything like this. It is required quarterly wellness check-ins for everyone at the Police Department. The City Council provided $50,000 in funding for this current fiscal year, but we also received another $118,800 grant from the federal government to fund this program for two years, and that allowed us to bring in Brentwood Police Department as a partner as well. We have an agency that we've contracted called InterDynamics, which is in Prince George's County. And what happens is, once a quarter, and we're now finishing our second quarter, everyone at these police departments meets one-on-one in virtual meetings with licensed clinicians who have experience working with first responders. That was my first priority in designing this program. They had to have experience working with first responders. Second priority was making sure that the clinicians are racially diverse. And so we've had five different clinicians for people to choose from. They sign up. The information that I receive simply states if someone went to their session or if they did not. This is completely designed outside of our city in terms of nothing goes through health insurance, nothing goes through the HR department, nothing is reported to the chief. This is a wellness check-in. It is not tied to a fitness-for-duty assessment or anything else that could cause an officer or dispatcher to feel concerned about whether or not they would still have a job. The point of the wellness check-ins is simply to make sure that people are doing okay. And if they're not, that the clinicians can then help them, can give them some techniques to help them better deal with stressors, whether it's on the job or at home. This is a program that's designed to help them on the job, so they can be, can bring their, their best self to the community, but also support themselves at home, support their family members at home. So two big initiatives that are supported by our City Council, obviously the Police Department, but also the federal government with some, some great grants as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrienne. You say it best, is providing the resources and help so they can be their best at work and be able to recognize and help our community members. So the time for the Q and A questions is here. And, but before that, I want to acknowledge our city administrator, Tracy Douglas, who's here with us, and just wanted to see if she wants to say hello and mute herself and just say hi.
Just want to say I'm happy to be here and thank you all for attending. This is, this is so very important. And as Adrienne opened up and talked about what's happening in our schools, it's just so very important that we start taking a harder look at, at mental health and what we can do to support our children and their families. So thank you all for, for taking this so seriously and for the importance that you place on this topic. And Sandra, thank you for leading this. It's wonderful.
Thanks. So as we explain, we, the way there is going to go, you can raise your hand or you can jump in and just answer the questions. We're going to start with general questions, and I would start, and then David, we're going to go back and forth in asking the, the questions. So one of the questions that I think everyone wonders, right? What is a mental health condition? Again, I can ask, what is a mental health condition? Anybody can jump in and answer. Greg, I'm looking at you smiling. Julie?
A mental health condition, we typically think of it in terms of diagnoses. And as we go through these things, one of the best ways for folks just day-to-day to think about it is to think in terms... is to think in terms of uh the way your thoughts, emotions, behaviors uh impair your day-to-day life, how they impact you. And I think that's one of the ways that a lot of folks misunderstand what it is. They think of a diagnosis being some kind of uh judgment or something wrong with them. And I think that's one of the things that we, on the mental health side, try to re, you know, help people uh look at things in a different way and acknowledge that it's just behaviors that we're looking at uh and experiences and what supports you need to manage those behaviors, manage those symptoms. So um managing mental health, it's just looking at ways where you might struggle with something. Sometimes that means you need therapy. Sometimes that means you might need medication support. Um sometimes that is a long-term situation, and sometimes it can be short-term. But looking for the supports that you need and acknowledging that it's okay to need help and that there are people around to provide that assistance and support.
That's good. Anyone want a another input? Wait, good. David?
Thank you, Sandra. So our next question is, how common are mental health conditions amongst children, adults, and older adults? Who would like to address that?
Hello, I'm Julie Bowler, the team leader at On Track Maryland, Prince George's County, part of Shepherd Pratt. And um I would say that it's more prevalent than people think. Um I don't know the all the numbers. Um I'm not a big numbers person, but um I do know that, you know, with talking with people just on a day-to-day basis, I've heard from um, you know, people in the schools, people in the hospitals, um and just, you know, adults that I come in contact with that that have said, you know, I'm I'm really struggling and I need some help. So I think that um although I don't have the exact numbers, I think that, you know, it's it's a common thing that that people at some point in their lives will um, you know, may need some additional help and supports. And as Greg mentioned, you know, there's people out here to help. Um and so um get in contact with us if you feel the need for those supports.
Thank you, Julie. Um anybody else want to add?
Yes. Um going off of what Julie said, I also don't know the exact numbers. Um but it is, I I feel like it affects everyone across the board. And I think that as a society, we're doing better in acknowledging that children can also um have mental illnesses. I mean, I think that's very important because sometimes we forget that children also have feelings and also both of some of the things that um adults may not pay attention to.
Thank you so much. Sandra, back to you.
Yep, and um I saw that there is the link uh on the chat. And I also want to acknowledge that I entering Mayor Robert Carson was here and just wanted to say hello. Um and I don't know if he left yet, but I saw him, so I just want to acknowledge him. But um thank you. There's the the uh the, I think it's the link to one of the organizations where Julie works. So anyone wants more information about this other question that we have here, it's almost like three questions and one. So um so let me make sure if you have any questions to clarify the question. So it goes, what are some of the signs that could be visible in symptoms that are not visible of depression um or anxiety? And are the signs uh or the system symptoms different among children, youth, and older adults? If you want me to say it again, I said?
I could just, um what I was gonna say is I know, um I think just talking with people, thinking about sleep is very important. Um, you know, are people sleeping throughout the night or or sleep patterns changing? Um are people eating either um too much or too little, not getting enough nutrition? And um, you know, so I think those are probably things that parents of youth would probably pick up on first. Um and I don't know, I'll kick it to Greg or uh America if you want to have any other.
Sure. Um also isolation, if you notice that, and this can be for anyone. If you notice that someone wants to be alone a lot, that's maybe unusual um for that person. Um let's see, maybe they're not as, maybe you can see a change in their mood, in their behavior um when talking to them, even sometimes with text messages. I know we often sense like something off from our friend that we're talking to or our family member that we're talking to. So just picking up on on cues like that, like are they their usual selves or something going on that you might want to ask about?
Let's add a little bit more, the the sleep in particular appetite are all important. Um but mood cha, a lot of times we look at changes. Uh that could be changes in daily functioning, whether uh for young folks, whether that's talking about uh ability to do homework, relationships, can be mood changes. It can be change in interests, hobbies, or do you stop finding things enjoyable that you used to find enjoyable? Increase in anxiety, feelings of hopelessness, uh thoughts of suicide, uh thoughts of hurting yourself uh through injury. A lot of times we we avoid saying things outright like the word suicide, thoughts of killing yourself, thoughts of hurting yourself, uh because sometimes cutting. Uh but I identifying those things, talking about them out loud, all of those things are valid things that we look for and identi- identifying, no matter the age group, some things are more prevalent in different age groups. Um but again, all of these types of symptoms, changes in behavior are things that we look for.
Yes, and as a special educator, I'd like to chime in that sometimes you can notice a difference in children's performance academically. Maybe where they were very interested in school and performing very well, all of a sudden that starts to decline. So as a special educator, we are trained to identify those things and to, you know, share those things with our counselors, our mental health clinicians, if we notice those things. If a student already has an IEP for a reason such as an emotional disability, then that's something that we would also take note of and how it is impacting that student's performance.
All right. David, your next question?
Thank you, everyone. That was great feedback. Um our next question, are there risk factors for experiencing or having anxiety, depression, and/or suicidal thoughts? Are there risk factors for experiencing or having anxiety, depression, or suicidal thoughts? Anyone?
Yeah, I saw Julie nodding her head, and she was like, of course. So uh Julie, you want to take this one?
Um so I think um and just to add on from the the last point, I think parents are probably um good um people at assessing their own children, and they know them best. And so um, you know, if parents notice anything, you know, that's when then they should reach out um and and to get help. But um, you know, I think um kids can experience anxiety from bullying or a traumatic event. Um and so um, you know, I think it's real important to, if you do notice those changes, to definitely um, you know, ask them what's going on and 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 try and get help. And I don't know if anybody has anything else.
Yeah, I do want to add on to that because sometimes those anxieties might surface more in school if that sort of traumatic event is taking place or the bullying is taking place. So that is why it is uh why we take the parent workshops and engaging with the school uh so important because what, sometimes what we are seeing at school might not be showing up at home because home is a comfortable place. Where school, you know, sometimes when that transition happens from elementary to middle or middle to high school, things change, the school is bigger. So you start seeing, um you know, maybe what might look like some social anxiety or, as I said before, a decline in that student's academic performance. So just, you know, staying in touch with your child's school and vice versa, having that strong two-way communication is really good. Because, you know, uh it it happens a lot, like we might see something, but the environment at home is so different that what we're seeing, the parents or the families are not necessarily seeing.
I'd also like to add to just uh i- in terms of risk factors, any history of mental illness, family history of mental illness. But in particular, uh one of the most major risk factors for uh suicide is previous attempts. Um that is one of the biggest things to look at. So uh if anybody has no suicide attempts, um that that is a very big red flag to look at. So when we start hearing things like shame, anxiety, uh as as Dr. McCurdy was noting, uh increase in aggression or other types of changes in behaviors like that, um or triggering events, uh maybe just talking about school shootings can be a triggering event for a lot of our youth. So knowing that this continues to happen and that there's not a lot to protect uh youth, it can be alarming. So noting these things, but again, things to look forward that are also troubling can be kind of that um inflexible or intrans and intransigent thoughts that just don't change people. The children get stuck. I mean, this can be in adults as well. Uh another thing to look forward uh on the opposite side of risk factors can be supportive factors uh that uh again, as Dr. Curdy was mentioning, those social supports, those connections. Um is the child being withdrawn, or are they talking and engaged with their friends, their loved ones, the people that care about them, the teachers? Access to care, strong therapeutic alliance, things that help uh bring uh children or anybody who's struggling with uh their traumatic events, bring them back together and engage with uh their community, and that community can be anyone that they're involved with. So just being recognized, being able to recognize what those supports are and increase access to the supports.
But you know, we had an order here, and I'm glad that you guys started talking about the signs of suicide, right? And we wanted to, we were gonna jump in into that since we are already um in that uh discussion. And we wanted to ask you guys a question that a lot of times, you know, uh parents, uh families, even people that works with young folks, and I mean, teachers ask their, ask themselves this question. And it's, it is, is it harmful to ask a loved one or somebody else? I am concerned about if they are thinking about suicide or harming themselves. Um so is it, it's, does it make it worse, or should we do it, or 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 yeah?
So I I'll just reiterate for myself too. I am the Director of the Crisis Services for Prince George's County uh for our affiliated Sante Group. So that's partly why why I keep speaking up so much. Um but that uh idea of if you ask somebody about it, uh that you are giving them the idea or encouraging them, it is one of the biggest myths um in regards to suicide. Uh if you ask somebody, you are not giving them the idea. By asking, you're actually normalizing it and making it okay. So encouraging somebody to talk about it um is probably one of the most supportive things that you can do. And then recognizing if you are unqualified to provide support, connecting them to those supports that a lot of us here in this room actually provide.
I'm glad that you said that because I I I am one of those people that have been leery about asking or, you know, inquiring because I I always thought like, well, if I asked, then maybe not he'll think about it. And it could just be because of the setting that I'm in, so I do always kind of refer those things. But thank you for that because I I'm always nervous about asking that.
To that end too, just to add supports, um uh there there other agency that provides crisis support in the county is I-MIND, and they are accessible through two-one-one, two-one-one presently. Uh but come July, uh nine-eight-eight will become the uh primary means for accessing suicide support, um not just in uh the county, but the state and in the country. So uh just start uh getting that in your head, nine-eight-eight. It is a way to access mental health support, um particularly suicide prevention and.
I'd like to add there that there is a phenomenal training called Ask: Assessing for Suicide in Kids. And it speaks um specifically about the fact that speaking to a child about suicide does not mean that, as Greg just said, they're going to then get the idea for it. But it also, um and I I am a mental health advocate, and I specifically do not try to work with children because that is well outside of my lane. But in taking this training, um I found it to be incredibly helpful to understand what to look for and also then how to approach a child who you think may be showing signs of um possible suicidal ideations.
I I wanted to add, um in talking to several students who've had this encounter, um I don't ask the question flat out because um there may be moments where um some of our students will correlate it to shame because growing up um culturally, um I'm, from what I've heard from from some of my students, is that um some of their parents have told them that having thoughts of or having ideations about um suicide is like a cowardly act. And so what my approach um to students in order to best delegate how I can get them the help that they need, I'll more so ask questions about how they're feeling. And so explaining to them, for example, like the emotional wheel, um some students won't won't be able to just say, I am feeling like I want to self-harm or I don't want to be here. There, though, I'll try and walk them through um their feelings. So they try to explain to them, for example, about despair and loneliness to really tack on, okay, like what what is it around this idea? What is it that you're feeling exactly? So that way I can get a little bit more of information and assess, okay, let me go get someone right now to talk to them to further be able to assist them, or let me get them um to a hotline. So I really try um to emphasize the importance to our students that shame does in safe spaces. And so I'm very open-minded with our stu, well, we try to be very open-minded with our students and let them know that it is the confidential space. Um whatever they would like to share is going to stay um between us and just more so trying to guide them about how um they can get the com- comfortable with the idea about um speaking up for themselves and how to express what they're feeling. So that's how I take my approach um with our students whenever they're referred. And I have had any experiences with students that are having um suicidal thoughts or wanting to self-harm, try to talk them through um and then go ahead from there and and get them the help or assistance that they need.
So, you know, you answered the other question, how do we help? How do we ask for help? And you guys just answer everything. I mean, you guys are the experts in this. I do want to, like, maybe if somebody can, I love her, they, or talk a little bit about older adults. What are the trends that you see with older adults? We uh deal with our seniors. Um and so what are some, how can older adults can get help if they're not, you know, in the setting and have the the like, in the setting of how the school system is and how they set up uh to get those uh services or support if they dealing with uh suicide thoughts?
I'll reiterate what I I said earlier about the importance of labeling it uh and asking outright. Uh to Tanya's point, there are a lot of uh people who come from cultures where um it is very frowned upon and very shameful to even mention suicide or that it's happened in your family. Um and it's one of the reasons as providers, uh it is really important for us to talk about it, to to put put the labels on of this is suicide. That's why we don't talk about committing suicide. We try to adjust it to say somebody completed a suicide. The importance being, the more people talk about it, the more they're going to be likely to ask for help, to get that support. Um the act of talking, and a lot of times where uh individuals have had those thoughts, um they have been embarrassed about talking about it. Somebody comes and talks to them and essentially helps talk them out of that. Uh and that's part of the reason where we come through uh the process of emergency petitions, where somebody is unwilling to get the support that they need, where counselors will have to make that involuntary hospitalization decision when somebody cannot uh agree to safety. However, talking about it, labeling those things, uh and being sensitive when uh traumatic of events hap, traumatic events happen, whether that be loss of a loved one, um loss of a job, there are a lot of events that can be uh triggering events like that and how we talk about it, approach folks. But again, the importance of taking it on ourselves as the providers to ask the question upfront outright because we're not going to give them the idea. Uh we're going to give them that safe space to talk about it uh and help them access the support that they need.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Um I was just gonna say, you know, I like what what Greg said and I think again, you know, if you're concerned about it, ask about it. Um and I know every person that comes through our clinics um at Shepherd Pratt, we ask those questions um in our intake. Um because it is so important um and just anybody that that you. You know, know that is feeling hopeless or um, you know, just again, that isolation or um having. Strong feelings of guilt or shame and just kind of, you know, if you notice something, you know, say something to them um and and ask how you can help.
David?
Wow, so you know, I am just loving all this feedback, you know, as a as a suicide prevention advocate, you know. This is so important. Um you know, there's also, I wanted to, there's another training called QPR training, which is um. The QPR Institute, it's a suicide prevention training. But um, you know, there's, there's another question we were gonna ask, but um. I want to introduce uh Dr. Liz Faison, our Associate Superintendent. And also Director of her um Student Services. I saw that she joined. I hope she's able to um. Say a few remarks if she's available. Uh Ms. Faison, are you there?
I am.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Um I I am sitting in a car, so I don't want to be disruptive and turn my camera on. But I I am always really honored when um the community takes an interest um in. Supporting the mental health of its constituents and um we we always have a collaboration with. Ms. A Shepard and our board member Booze Struther. And I'm very uh grateful for our clinicians and our community um partners, mental health. Um workers who are on the call this afternoon and our counselors. Um it's extremely important and this month being. Uh Mental Health Awareness Month, I think the conversation is certainly apropos and it will also give us information. You know, that our community will be able to utilize not just mu- this month, but beyond um this month. Sometimes the summers um can be extremely hard for families. And there are lots of adjustments that um need to be made with families. So the information that you're providing today. Will just be helpful for our parents and for um our students and community beyond today. So I'm going to say less, but just thank you for continuing to lift up this work and have it top of mind. Um for our professionals, for our parents, for our community constituents. And um I I look forward to joining the next session that you're gonna have. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Faison, for always supporting this. Um so you know, we're gonna jump into the other question and I think there's just. To um you guys are answering all the questions that we have without even like asking them. Um which shows that you know what you guys are talking about and are, you know, um are very knowledgeable about mental health. Um so then the question is about how to get supported now um. In in terms of what are some of the barriers that prevent many African Americans? And other communities of colors for seeking mental health services. And I know that you guys touched a little bit about in terms of religion, in terms of, you know, culture. Um so I just wanted to hear from you guys and see what are some of the barriers or the um. Stigma that um communities of colors um uh uh suffer um related to mental health.
I can start. Um I know at least with my experience at Hyattville Middle School. Um and thankfully I speak Spanish, but a lot of it is language barrier with our Latinx families and students. Um you know, there isn't that many of um clinicians that speak Spanish or that are bilingual in that, you know, kinda. Um makes the student or the family kind of shy away from reaching out for, to ask for help. Um so I think it's very important to try to. You know, diverse of diversify our field in that sense to make sure that everyone is um receiving the support that they need. And the services that they need.
Thank you.
I can speak to this um putting on a slightly different hat in this moment. Um part of why I work at the police department is because I showed up asking to volunteer as a mental health advocate. I did launch a mental health grant making foundation called a Beautiful Mind Foundation and our focus has been to provide funding to culturally competent. Mental health support programs and uh education services. Specifically because of the challenges that many communities of color face in getting the appropriate mental health support services. For instance. A lot of what I've learned includes the fact that within the Asian American community, the idea of mental health, mental illness. Means that if there is one member of the family who um is seen to have a mental illness, that this can then bring shame. Not just on that person, but on the entire family. Um we have with African American families a lot of times and and I think this is a lot of the older generations are are younger millennials. Are very open about talking about mental health, but a lot of the time it was go to church, um pray about it, wasn't about talking to a counselor. Um also with the Latinx community, um there's the idea of the the stigma of being um strong and macho. And not being able to talk about mental health in that culture. Um and then there's also the use of how different cultures cultures express how they are feeling in terms of a mental illness. So. Um one thing that stood out for me that I learned is that with African American women, we might not necessarily use the word depressed, but we may say we're very tired. And to a clinician who is not aware that even when you're using the same words in English. What I'm very tired means to one cultural group may not get the person the support that they need. So there are a lot of different reasons why people of different cultures, ethnicities are not able to get the support they need. And it's not just about the clinician looking like them or even having necessarily the same life experience, but just simply recognizing. That mental health, the language we use, English to English, Spanish to English can be translated very differently.
Yes, indeed. Uh next, anybody else? And we were talking to having um um you know, the challenges, right, with um. With how do we, how do we, how do we access, you know, how how do we get resources? What do you guys recommend for families who might not have insurance or might be low income and might not know how to even start? To get their services. What are the the services that uh the county or the school system may have? For individual that doesn't know how to access um mental health services?
I would, I would say that um for those families, especially families in the surrounding area of Hyattville. Hyattville Middle School is a community school and the services that we. Have available to us are not just for the children. And Ms. Machuka, of course, could speak more uh about that. But you know, the services that we can find or provide are for families. Our family workshops, it's for everybody because the goal is to support the families so that the children. Can progress academically. So I would say definitely start with your schools and um, you know, they there are resources available. That the schools can uh refer people to.
I wanted to add to that. Um for example, that's where um our school and community engagement advocate and I will. Collaborate together when we get referred a student, let's say we have a student who is undocumented, uninsured. And they need um mental health services, they need that connection. Um we have school um ending. And unfortunately, um through community schools, the clinician that we have, Ms. Seto, um her time also ends when. Our school ends. So what do we do from there to keep providing services that students may need? So it would just start off. Figure out how we can get the student insurance. So for example, um. Ms. Ms. Lucero from DSS, she connected me to um Kaiser for Kids. So there they're able. Um to provide insurance to families that are undocumented, uninsured. Um all they have to do is provide um. Documents um proving their income and. Um from there, they they cover all um services of at no cost to um for students, excuse me, and then from there. Getting them connected to any agency or organization. Um for the meantime, while the insurance is pending. Trying to find an organization that's either pro bono or that offers this service to students and families. And that's why I wanted to include that in our last slide. Um the Children in Need of Support Program. I recently was connected to them um through a partner and they explained to me that they work with students and families. Um long term and they're assigned a case manager and they provide therapeutic services for free. So those are the kind of resources that I will definitely connect my families and my students to. And it like Dr. McCurdy said, it's super important, not only um for our students, um but our families, our parents too. Grandparents, anyone that were able to help connect. Um we also came across um like a pro boning, pro bono, excuse me, counseling service. Um and we connected parents to that, that they could use and log in. Online and meet um and to be able to talk to a clinician as well as there are um parent support groups that. Um do intakes with the clinician and and connect the parent to other parents and so that they're able to receive parenting advice. Um to be able to tackle these issues and um situations that their students are facing. So there's definitely. Um ways that we connect. Um we just, first off, we just start off by getting to know the situation that our student or families in. And then try and tackle each task. Okay, let's get them signed up for insurance. Okay, from while they're waiting for insurance, let's get them connected to our in-house clinician. Okay, done there, let's connect them to a summer program. So um we're trying to provide that full. Service or trying to connect them to have their needs met is super important to us because. We don't want to just leave, introduce them to the idea of receiving services and then it just end there. We want it to be a continued process um because doing the work isn't linear, like you have your. You have your progression, then you have your fallbacks, and that's what we really try to instill in our parents. And our students, like be patient, like we're going to, you know, get through this, but first let's connect you. Let's let's figure out what you need.
Thank you. So the last questions, I think that we should close it with um some um. Uh advice of how to uh do, you know, cope and self-care. Um and so. Um I wanted it to ask you guys, um what do you so suggest for ways to promote self-care? Um for, I mean, even your own self, but like because the work that we do, it's it's. It's 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 hard, but it's also rewarding. So I just wanted to hear what um advice you have.
I would say um for me, it's setting boundaries. You know, even with people that I love because I just need that time for me. Um and giving your permission, giving yourself permission to say no and um. You know, if if it's, if something is too much at work, um you know, or um in your personal life, just giving yourself permission to say. Okay, I can't do that at this moment. Um and and that's okay. Um and then even setting goals for yourself, like what can I do daily to to make myself feel good and um to refresh myself? Whether that be listening to music, taking a walk, and then set those goals for yourself um weekly, monthly, yearly. So to kind of give yourself some guidance of, you know, cuz when you think about it, you can write it and it kind of makes sense. But if you're just kind of like, oh, I know I need to uh walk today, like it's it kind of like, for some people, it makes it more concrete. So I think that's been helpful for me.
I'll go next. This is my self-care right here.
No, hi.
Uh just making sure that I make time for my children and my family, uh my husband included. They're actually at football practice right now, but daily when I come home, we go bike riding together and we do things that we enjoy. And I do have those conversations with her. She's eight years old, but this is my only girl. And she tells me that my conversations are weird. Um but I do think that it's important cuz it gives me peace of mind because I can't see how I could be. Providing these amazing services for everyone else and then I can't speak to what I'm doing with my own. So. My self-care is making sure that I have peace of mind that I am maintaining that consistent communication with my children. And um Ms. Machuka knows, Ms. Slaro knows, like Ms. Stanford knows, they're everywhere with me all the time and I just. Gotta know that they're okay, we're communicating, we're talking, we're doing things that we enjoy, even if we're just dancing. That's why I blurred the screen cuz she was dancing in the back. But um that's my self-care, you know, like I love my job. I'm super passionate about my job, about working with children with disabilities and helping low-income families and all of that. And um that's peace of mind for me too, but just making sure that mine are good is, that's my self-care.
Going off of what Dr. McCurdy said and Julie, um just allowing yourself to take care of yourself. And remember, no matter what position you are, whether it's your personal life or in professional life as helpers. Um sometimes we also need help and and just remember that and allow yourself to also slow down sometimes.
I'd also like to follow up on something Dr. McCurdy said with dancing. And I do have a few sticky notes around my home, particularly helpful because I telework and it reminds me to have a three or four minute dance party. So I will put on one song from my favorite type of music, soca music, S O C A, in case anybody wants to look it up. And Dr. McCurdy knows, and uh one good soca song completely shifts your mindset and um and can. And it can reinvigorate me for the next several hours. So I highly recommend private uh dance parties for a few minutes during the day.
I saw a couple, um I support dance parties. I love that. We all, that's great, Adrian. Thank you. Next. Anybody else? Greg?
Sure. I I always love to talk about having that person or people that you trust to tell you that you're not yourself. Um and just acknowledge that, you know, that you're having a hard time. Um and I mean, I I'll, I'll, I'll say flat out. Uh that I I've had some troubles this this spring where I just, I needed somebody to tell me. You need, you need to take a day off and it was, it's, I I'm, I'm always so focused on helping everybody else. I'm like, I got this, I got this, I got this. Until finally, uh you know, those people close to me is like, no, you you don't got this. So I'm like, okay. I feel like I do, I'm gonna shut up and I'm going to to listen to the people that, and that's the hardest thing I think that we all have to do is to be able to listen to those people. That we love and care about, that we know care about us, to say, stop, step back, take care of yourself, do those things you enjoy. Whether it be dancing, getting outside, get active. And the one thing that I'm sure everybody will uh, you know, reach through the screen and, you know, get me for is. Turn the screens off a little bit more often. Um step away from our electronics because we're just, we're so attached to them. And they really, the the amount of time that we spend on screens, especially our youth, is linked to depression. And how do we help our kids unplug, get active and do those things? So. Um but again, have those people that you trust to call you out and tell you, step back, take care of yourself because we need you to.
Wow, I need people to call me outside. Wow, this is has been amazing. I kept seeing all these wonderful resources, David. Uh and Marcy was adding, I do want to highlight unless anyone else wants to share or any advice. Um raise your hand, come on now, or are you good to go? Um I want to close it out. I had kept you for ten more minutes, so I appreciate your dedication, your hard work to the community. And making sure that you show the resources and how, you know, the work that you're doing to make um our community better. Our young people, our everybody um uh more healthier. Um. So I just want to say thank you. I also want to highlight that there are all these resource guidelines we have um on our website. With the city of Hyattville, we also can print it out. If you need it, you can come to the city, we will print it out for you. And provide a hard copy um with the contact information of um the panelists and all the resources that we have available in the city. And in Prince George's County. Um with that being said, I can't wait to for us to um. Do our next forum. Um we are trying to do our twenty uh mental health um uh, mental health of. Twenty-four seven forums every quarter and address different topics to try to bring resources. To try to um address the stigma on more in our cultures um and just, you know, um normalize it. That is, it's, mental health is here and is not. Um and just, you know, um normalize it. That is, it's, mental health is here and it's not uh only in May. It's every day twenty-four seven. And um so I am looking forward uh to continue these forums. And provide more information about mental health. Uh thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Unless you want to say a comment, um we can say it now or I see you next time. Good. All right. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.